Excellent. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening on January tenth of two thousand and twenty-two for our a regular session of our city council meeting. Uh it's seven o'clock and tonight we're going to be having a public hearing on the park master plan. We're also going um in the potential for adopting the park master plan by city resolution. We're also gonna have two presentations, one's gonna be on the downtown streetscape projects bio swell. And then we're also gonna have um presentation of certificates of appreciation for some of Philomena's volunteers. We'll then have our visitors and petition section. Uh we'll go through our consent agenda and then we have a number of new business items that includes discussion of our hiring our finance director. Doing our two thousand and twenty-two council standing committee appointments, a number of our of our committee um committees and public commission report um appointments are somewhere and award nominees and a discuss and uh a mention of the America Rescue Plan Act funds in our moving forward with that. And then we have three ordinances and resolutions, followed by council and staff reports. So that's just a summary, but first we're gonna get started with a roll call.
Catherine Bisco. Here, Swiss Cosi.
Here.
Matt Lehman.
Here.
David Lo.
I'm here.
Teresa Nielsen.
Here.
Jessica Andrade.
Present.
And Chaz Jones.
I am here. Wonderful. And um before we get started, I had a uh request by Council Cosi to consider um changing the council rules for one for tonight's meeting. Uh Council Cosi, do you have a motion that you wanted to make?
I just want to introduce a motion to limit debate given um our extensive agenda.
Did you have more specifics about what that would include?
Um I would perhaps suggest we limit each counselor to two comments on a given topic no more than five minutes in length.
My understanding is that a motion to limit debate um would require a two-thirds majority of the council and but would also first have to get a second. So we have a motion made by counselor Cosi, seconded by counselor Nielsen. Um and that was to ha- for each counselor to have up to five minutes on each topic for two comments per topic. Okay.
Yes, I believe to um to expand on that, I believe after a counselor's initial comment that all other counselors should have an opportunity to comment if they wish before this counselor speaks again.
Great.
I believe that's customary, but I'm defer to Mr. Brewer.
Okay, and Jim, does that all make sense? Is that um is there anything else we should consider in that?
Whatever the council wants to do.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Cosi, did you want to speak any further to that motion or are you?
No, I would certainly entertain any amendments if someone wants to modify those parameters.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Andrade.
To clarify, because I heard council rules and thought you meant specifically for the council rules item on the agenda, but you mean all every single. Okay, cool. Just wanted to double check on that. Thank you.
That would just be for tonight's entire council meeting. Uh so all in favor of uh passing uh this motion as stated, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. So uh Counselor Bisco, how did you vote?
I voted no.
Okay, so so motion carries of five to two. So I'm gonna ask that Counselor Cosi uh track times. Um and then given given the uh work session this evening or this evening's work session, I just wanted, I would entertain a motion to add an item at at the end of our new business to have a further conversation about that if everybody wanted to um.
A move.
Okay, so counsel those suggesting that we can have a follow-up conversation at the end of our new business on tonight's work session topic of the LID on Eleventh Street. Um do I have a second? So we have a uh motion made by Counselor Low and seconded by Counselor Cosi. All in favor of um adding that to the works of the agenda, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
So and all opposed, please raise your hand and say nay.
Aye.
So and Counselor Bisco, are you abstaining?
Um I approve that, so yes.
Okay, so so that we had a pa- a motion carries five to two. Um and Counselor Bisco, your video is off, so we can't actually see how you're voting. With that, uh we're gonna go ahead and get started with our uh public hearing and I'm I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the park master plan. And this is a this public hearing is not necessary for tonight's meeting. Uh we wanted to do that to provide an extra opportunity for the uh public to uh weigh in on the park master plan. Just thought it would be a nice courtesy this evening. But um so this is a rather formal public hearing. Um this is not a land use um hearing. And Jim, is there anything else I should mention about that?
No, usually what you do is uh just to make it easy for uh people who are testifying uh to to ask people to speak in favor first, in opposition, second, and if they're neutral or mixed, then they come last.
Okay, great.
You would not have rebuttal or anything like that.
Thank you. And with that, um we have a presentation by MIG. And Chris, do you wanna, do you want to introduce the speakers?
I will just real quick and I'll excuse me, I'll apologize. Chelsea Starner's taken over this project. She couldn't be with us tonight. She's not feeling well, but uh John Venus is here. He's been with this on the project from the very beginning. Has done a lot of great work, working with the park advisory board and the community on this, and I believe he's got the presentation tonight. And then uh following the presentation, uh we can go to to public comments, uh close the public hearing and then the council can deliberate and discuss uh resolution twenty-two dash oh one, which would um approve the updated master plan. So with that, I'll go and turn the time over to John to walk through the presentation and uh kind of leave it to him. I'm I'm assuming he'll probably get through the presentation. He can answer questions uh when we get to anything specific and do right away or or wait till deliberation that we can answer questions.
Great, thank you. And John, I'll just mention, we do have a pretty extensive agenda this evening, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yes, absolutely. I know there's a full agenda. Um we'll keep it really brief and uh make sure there's some time for discussion. So uh good evening, everyone. Uh council members and members of the public. I'm John Venus with MIG. We're a consulting firm helping uh the city of Flometh with this important uh parks and trails master plan update. So tonight uh caps off about a year-long process and I'm gonna walk you through exactly what we did. Uh some of the key outcomes of the project and talk about some of those those recommendations. So last time we were together, we we presented some key findings back in June of two thousand and twenty-one. And at that point, we were still gathering information, updating the inventory and viewing conditions on the ground. And so that all helped us define uh the recommendations we're presenting tonight. So purpose of the project, uh one, we want to update. What do we have? What are the resources that the city is responsible for, both for taking care of and for maintaining uh into the future? Documenting needs and priorities. And so this is a uh feature of every phase of this project involving the community, council members and the parks board to help us define what the goals for the long-term future of parks and recreation are in Philomena. So the vision, where are we heading and what are the goals that we need to follow to get there? And then all of those get us to specific recommendations for the future. The plan process, we followed three phases. So the three general steps, beginning as Chris mentioned in spring twenty twenty-one. Here we are in winter of two thousand and twenty-two. And each phase is really a way to layer information on top of more information to find what the 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 results are. What are the recommendations? So as I mentioned, the community was involved in every step of this project. We had a really incredible turnout with the community questionnaire. We had over eight hundred responses. So hopefully many of you had a chance to take that questionnaire. And then all the way through the project webinar, I think some of you were at that uh online webinar as well as some online polling to help us find out what are those priorities we want to see happen first. As I mentioned, the Parks Advisory Board was a key part of this process. This was a community-involved, community-supported project. So as a consultant, as a project manager, my task was to help identify what is it that's uh needed in the community um and how do we prioritize those those needs. And we did that by asking a series of questions. What are some opportunities? What are some challenges? This is a graphic of some of the interviews we did early on in the process. We talked with Frolic Rodeo, the school district and others, and there are all sorts of opportunities as well as some challenges that we thought about as we went through this process. So great volunteers, a lot of great assets, beautiful parks, um great events, the Frolic Rodeo, and then some challenges, uh lack of of facilities, aging facilities, like the skate park, we heard a lot about ADA accessibility uh and so on, lots of lots of things for us to consider. So those all helped us find out what those recommendations need to be as well as the park system philosophy. The park system philosophy consists of a vision, goals and policies. Uh the city has a chapter in the comprehensive plan for parks and recreation, uh but there really isn't a vision. Uh how do we, how do we describe where we want to be in ten, twenty years down the road? So there's a lot of words on here. I just wanted to highlight a few of the the items in here that make this vision uh pretty unique. So the identity of Philomena's uh being inclusive, all ages, backgrounds and abilities, local economy. This is something that uh one of you mentioned back in June, how important that is uh in the connection with parks and recreation. And then an interconnected trail system, by far one of the top needs uh from this process. Uh we heard a lot about the protection of natural areas. That's a very critical priority for Philomena, going back to the city's identity and quality of life. And then maintenance is a big part of this vision. Communication awareness are also part of the recommendations and vision that you see here. So capital projects, I'm just gonna highlight uh some some key parts of the capital projects in this plan. And this plan isn't just capital projects. I think the biggest part of this this plan is describing the vision you just saw. What what do we want to be? Uh the the projects help us get there, but there's a lot more more to that. But I'm gonna just talk quickly about projects. How were they identified? Community input, recreation trends that we documented, existing conditions, other plan studies and initiatives. So the city's strategic plan, comprehensive plan, the two thousand and sixteen parks plan uh and transportation system plan and others that are part of that. So a conceptual uh future map showing all recommended improvements, new parks, improvements to existing parks, new trails, being a big part of this, all part of that future system. Um but it's important to keep in mind that it's not any one project that is more important than the other. Prioritizing those are are critical, and that's exactly what we did as a final step. So the ten-year capital project list, again, longer-term projects, we're not talking about things that are gonna happen next year or two years. This is really looking down the road, ten years uh plus from now. So we heard a lot uh from um our community engagement process about how important it is to take care of what we have. Existing parks, aging facilities, the needs of parks that the city already has in their inventory and takes care of. So this table shows all recommended improvements to existing parks, all eleven sites, totaling seventy-three, almost seventy-four acres and two point four million dollars. Again, this is the long-term cost to do all the improvements listed in the capital improvement project for existing parks and facilities. So taking care of existing sites. We also have new parks, facilities and trails, and this isn't totally new. The two thousand and sixteen plan had all sorts of new parks and trails identified. All told, we have seven new parks, new sites uh that that doesn't include nine segments of off-street trails. So lots of new parks, new trails. I just want to say off the bat, the key difference here between uh the two thousand and sixteen plan and this plan is really looking at right sizing that future system. We can have dozens of new parks, dozens of new facilities, but it won't matter if we can't pay for them and take care of them, more importantly. So really taking a critical look at what can the city maintain based on existing conditions. So part of that is um looking at new park sites to serve new development as well as some potential infill projects like the downtown park and a new skate park uh by far probably the top uh most expressed need for a new facility in the park system. Off-leash dog area, uh developing a dedicated off-leash dog area as well as um some other additional parks that are either planned or underway. So what does that all mean for for the budget for maintenance? Well, for maintenance and operations, just a quick fact on what the city's existing budget is and then what that estimated annual future maintenance budget would be. And this is, again, if you if we built everything out that's envisioned in this plan, that ten-year long-term vision, uh we're looking at around one hundred and ninety-five thousand per year for operations and maintenance for parks and recreation. So that's a a difference of about seventy-eight thousand uh that would be needed in addition, again, assuming the entire uh plan is is in fruition and everything is built out. So really quickly, project priorities. We had an online webinar. We had an online poll. Uh several of you and uh Parks Board members were able to provide their feedback on what they felt is most important within the next one to five years. So we had a a process for identifying those priorities, and I just wanted to highlight a few. Uh first and foremost is replacing the aging skate park in Sea Park. Uh ADA accessibility was something we heard a lot about, and we documented the fact that there are some some uh needed ADA improvements within existing parks such as Triangle Park, Mary's River Park. Uh developing Paul J. Crocker and Memorial Park, that was another priority uh that was discussed. And then invasive vegetation projects, and this is a a catch-all for what would need to be identified per site. So each site is different. No two sites would receive the same treatment. It really does depend on existing conditions. But the goal here is to identify the need to reserve some budget, to identify those issues and create a maintenance plan for invasive vegetation. Then lastly, seating, trash and recycling, lighting, really just all sorts of minor projects that we call them uh to really help with existing parks, fix capacity issues and really make these parks um all that they can be. So implementation, the plan has several steps on what do we do next? How do we make this happen? I'll just walk through these really quickly. First is developing a communication campaign. One of the things we heard a lot about throughout the process was a lot of folks love parks, they know what's there, but a lot don't. They're either new to the city. Uh they may just kind of know what's around their their immediate neighborhood. So I need to expand that communication as well as to help talk about the needs for maintenance and operations. These things are costly and the city needs some help uh in getting that support and momentum to implement the plan. Adopting a DEI policy, diversity, equity, inclusion policy. Uh the National Recreation and Parks Association has a great model uh as an example, but this is really walking the walk, talking the talk of uh a more inclusive and diverse city, starting with parks and recreation, operations, hiring, communications and so on. Pursuing grant funding, this is more of a continuation. Uh the city has been very successful with grant funding. A lot of the projects recommended in this plan are grant-eligible. Uh Oregon State Parks has some excellent grant programs, and this plan lines the city up uh to do just that, to be uh successful with grant funding. A collaboration on project design and funding, again, I think another item here that the city does well at um looking at things that have a public benefit and making sure parks and recreation can fit within that category. Reaffirming the role of the park advisory board, uh we involve the park advisory board throughout this process. And one thing we heard about was making sure that the board is part of these decisions uh before they're set into motion. So early and and ongoing through discussions on new parks, additions to parks and so on. Formalizing structure of events and programs, the city does not directly provide a a full recreation program as some larger cities do. However, there are other partners that do, and that's an important relationship. We heard a lot about that, how valuable that is. And so this recommendation is really to formalize that uh to make that um something that we can continue continue down the road for for the next generation. And then the last item we have on here, this was something that was also in the two thousand and sixteen Parks Master Plan, is the potential for a park district. Um Chris and others had talked about the potential for this. We want to make sure that's highlighted in this plan as potential. We know that there are park users and folks that that rely on Philomena for a number of reasons that may not live within city limits. So we want to make sure we're capturing the full potential of other users that are just outside of the city uh that that may be rely on parks and future parks as well that that could be included in this list. Hopefully that was um not too fast. I know we've got a lot to talk about. I wanted to thank everybody for their participation. Like I said, many of you have been involved with this. Uh the Parks Board and everybody out there in the public. So thank you so much. I'd like to open it up for uh questions and comments.
Now, John, I have one for you.
Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, John, I just wanted to tell you that it's just been tremendous. I think I speak for the entire pork bird to work with us on this to make it kind of simplified for us and then make us understand a lot better what's going on. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Dale.
Yeah, John, I just wanted to um emphasize, I really appreciate how much public engagement you incorporated into this and uh getting such a huge response to the surveys and very impressive. Uh both surveys never getting where near that sort of response, so I'm really happy with that. But and I appreciate you pulling this all together.
Uh Mayor, if I could, uh I'd like to also state that the park board went out on these surveys and such and literally went out and talked to the public rather than just sending them something in the mail. We actually went out and visited and found out what they wanted, so. John was good in working with us on how to do that and such, so that worked out well also.
Excellent, thank you. And we want the uh it we're in the middle of a public hearing, so we are going to now offer um opportunity for public comment. City Recorder, do we have anyone signed up to provide comment?
No, I do not have anyone signed up for public comment uh on the park master plan. I'm just looking to see.
I see that.
That's what I was gonna ask is um Ronna Foster is on the call. I'm not sure if she wanted to still speak to the park master plan. She did submit written comments that were distributed to all of you this afternoon. In addition, written comments uh and photographs were received this afternoon that were forwarded to you from Jeff Lamb. I've uh asked Ronna if she wants to unmute and speak. But um she she just has her phone, so she doesn't have uh video or um internet.
Okay. And so it may be that are do do and I'm just gonna verify, do we have her muted? Did we mute her or is she unmuted herself?
I did, I do not believe I muted her. I it I'm sending a message to ask her to unmute, which means it's on her end.
Because she is on a phone. Oh, she is unmuted now. Hi, Ronna, did you want to make a public comment during our public hearing?
Sure, I just sent in a written comment and I guess I am neutral. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We did get your written comment. Okay, uh so with that, the I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And with that, we can enter into council deliberations. Uh so Chris or Dale, did you want to speak to the uh agenda item?
Uh no, no, I think I said pretty much what I wanted to say.
Great, thank you.
I'll just add real quick, the um the resolution uh for consideration would essentially approve the the updated park master plan uh put into place, so we would start implementing and and utilizing that as we move forward. Um City Turner and I were talking about whether we wanted to take some of the policies from this and look at updating the comprehensive plan or not. I think just based on prioritization and the other things that we're working on with the comp plan. We could see doing that at some point in the future, but it's not of highest priority right now. Uh but we can still, again, implement the plan and and start working through um the vision and and the the um capital projects here. So that's what's before you this evening. The again, the resolution gives some background and the work that went into this and I just want to thank uh the park advisory board for their added work on this and all their input. Uh the community for all the input they've given on on the surveys and and the stakeholders and to staff to Chelsea Starner for kind of finishing this project up and it's a nice job. And and foremost, I want to thank John and his team at MIG. Um we were, you know, I think the council member, when we first went out for bid on this, we got three terrific um proposals and really had a hard time distinguishing between the three, but I I think we 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 had, you know, we couldn't really go wrong and and we we hit the bullseye with MIG and John and his leadership and his team. They've just done a great job and very responsive to us, worked around our schedule and and just did a great job. So overall, really, really good process. And um I'm happy to answer any specific questions. Uh but I think as Chelsea has in the memo, if the council wants a little more deliberation, the recommendation would be to do that another night. Uh if the council wants to consider the resolution tonight, I think that'd be more than appropriate.
Yeah, I'd love to entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-two oh one, adopting the city of Philomena's Park and Master Plan if if it cares one. Counselor Cosi?
So moved.
Excellent. And so we have a motion made by Counselor Cosi and seconded by Counselor Lehman. Counselor Cosi, would you like to speak to your motion?
I did want to ask um to echo Chris's comment, Chris's compliments on the report and the work that's been done here. It's really a wonderful piece of work. Um I did want to ask if you could briefly speak to um a park district, what is a park district? And um you mentioned a couple of funding sources, then I wonder if you know if these projects would be eligible for our funding.
Yeah. Chris, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, Counselor Cosi, I could go for the um first question on the park district. Uh so park districts are um a it's a really a funding tool um to help with parks, operations, parks, maintenance, parks, park development. And what we typically see is in Oregon, um a district serves a a larger area than just a city. So you have a lot of uh residents living just outside the city. Um usually, it's a lot of rural residents that are relying on a a city center for you know, park resources, for um jobs, for all sorts of different things. So it is um uh a funding tool that is uh legal in the state of Oregon. It is something that is required to go to voters, so it has to be voter-approved. Uh but with that, you can set a permanent tax rate uh to help pay for park uh funding and operations. So it is a very effective tool. It's a proven tool in uh Oregon as well as some other states as well. Yes, and second question, uh Counselor Cosi, there are several projects identified uh that any number of funding sources that we have listed in the plan would be eligible for. I mentioned uh grant funding. Uh that is a really popular one. That's uh Flossie Overman Park, I think was was one where grant funding was successful in helping develop that park. Uh so that is as one on the list. Uh the city's system development charges for parks, uh it's another useful tool that the city uses today. Uh that is something for future parks, so those parks that are serving future development uh with new growth, that is a a functional piece of um uh funding sources that that the city can use for future growth areas. Counselor Cosi, there was one, uh I didn't catch the last uh funding source you mentioned. You mind repeating that?
Was ARBA funding, the Recovery Act funding.
Yeah, there are. Yeah, there are some aspects of that. We don't have that specifically listed in the plan. Um, but that's definitely something that municipal park agencies are using to help with, uh, park development. We, we've seen, and I think we had this in the survey, uh, we actually asked that question in the survey. You know, how is your use of parks and recreation changed pre-COVID versus, you know, uh, being in COVID, especially. When things were closed down, parks weren't open, programs were closed. Uh, and you just see this, this massive reliance on parks and recreation, uh, really is an essential service. So I think those, um, recovery funds are something that go hand in hand with municipal park agencies to help, uh. Pay for some of these improvements.
Thank you.
Counselor Andrade.
Um, yes, thank you, John. This is a pretty awesome document. Uh. I do, however, I am, however, a little concerned about, um. The lack of, or from, from what I see, I can't find any, uh, mention of environmental. Uh, stewardship of, or at least from, uh. From a global climate change kind of lens in particular, um. So. Especially with, uh, the fact that one of the policies is, uh, to create a DEI policy. Which. Like it, it affects, they affect each other, um, anyway, um. So what is, why is that the case? If, was there any talk about that? Or is it in here and I'm just missing it? Um, and then also what was the method for identifying, uh, trails? And future parks and such because, um. Those piece, those land, uh, the land where that's, those, they're supposed to go maybe, uh. You know, unsensitive grounds. I mean, we, because especially with like the, uh, the water treatment plant, uh, reservoir being, you know. Built on Mary's River Park and natural area. So, um. Yeah, any thoughts about how to prevent that kind of thing from happening?
Yeah, those are great, great questions. Appreciate that. I, I'd say the first, um, for your first question on addressing. Uh, natural resource protection, um, and being up in front about that. I'd say that the place where we really highlighted that is probably under the first goal. Uh, goal one, provide a healthy and high quality park system. Um, so we've identified several policies in here. I, I, I did want to call out, not all of these policies are brand new. Uh, we worked with the Parks Board and, uh, Chris and Chelsea on bringing in comprehensive plan policies. Strategic plan policies into this plan. So you can kind of see it all together in, in one place. So, um. With that in mind, there are several policies that we identified. Either from existing, uh, documents like the strategic plan, comp plan, as well as what we heard from the community on protecting natural resources. And I, I'd say that goal one is probably the, the place where you'd see most of those policies relating to that. The second point, another great question. I think those two are definitely related. Um, you know, if we're looking at developing, uh. New parks and trails, there's obviously an impact to, uh, what's there today and to, to natural resources. So the, the way we identified those future sites and future trails, I'll start with the trails first. The trails came out of a couple of different resources. One, uh, several trail projects that, uh, haven't been built yet that were identified in the 2016 plan. Uh, we found that several of those continue to be just as important as they are in 2022. So those got highlighted and brought into this plan. Um, the transportation system plan, uh, really good plan. The city just adopted in, uh. 2018 and that plan has comprehensive transportation projects identified. What we did is we pulled out just the off-street trail projects. Uh, into the, the parks and trails plan because it is a, a trails plan as well. So. Again, consolidating all these different citywide policies and projects into one plan. So trails came from a couple of different sources. With the trails and the parks. This is, this is really a long-term plan. So the idea is that, uh, once the city starts. Developing some of these areas, uh, once a developer comes in, this is really the chance to say. Hey, this area is really a great spot for a park. It's right in the middle of the community. And a chance to say, hey, this is really an important asset, this, uh, natural open space. We need to protect that. This shouldn't be a developed park. Uh, so the plan gives the city the ability to be flexible with where those, uh, parks, uh, occur. That's exactly why we don't have a specific, you know, address or parcel, uh, for those future parks, because a lot depends on future growth. And, and development. So there is a little bit of, of flexibility involved. Sorry, just the one, one last point. I, I wanted to respond to your question on those future park sites. Uh, those are really based on, again, the 2016 plan where some of those were identified. Um, but with this plan. The location of some of those really had to do a lot with, uh, future residential uses. So. Higher density residential versus, you know, more low, low density residential. So we, we took a look at that as well with those new sites.
Thank you for that. I, well, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was a personal land or a specific, um, but what for the trails. It's a follow-up question.
I understand it is a follow-up question, but we're going to let the other counselors have a chance to speak based on the motion to limit debate. Um, if, if other counselors have a question they'd like to follow up with first, um, then we can follow up with Counsel Andrade. Um, seeing none, Counsel Andrade, you can go ahead and ask your second question.
Um, so then with regards to the trails, uh, that is something you said was taken from some of these documents. Were they exact trails? Like the, it's all planned out. There's, uh. You know, how far away from the creek it is and, or if it's along a creek and such.
Yeah, they, they are not exact trails. So, so these aren't, and that's, that's really, and it's. Something I see a lot of is, what's the difference between a, you know, a comprehensive plan and a site-specific plan? This is not getting to that level of detail to say, you know. This is exactly where the alignment needs to be. Here's the distance from this use or that use. This is really high level. So it, again, it gives the city the ability and the leverage to say, we've got new development coming in. Or we've got a property owner that's saying, hey, you know, I'd like to help you out and look for a connection through my property. This is a chance to do that, again, with some flexibility to say, maybe it's better on this side or it's better on this side. Uh, but it's not getting to that specific level to say exactly, uh, where that's going to be.
Thank you for that. It definitely looked like it was, so I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors have, uh, any questions? Excellent. Well, seeing none, um, we can go ahead and move to a vote on the motion at hand, which is to pass Resolution 2201. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Uh, Counsel Bisco, I did not see you vote. You abstaining?
I will be abstaining from this vote, yes.
So we have, um, motion carries, uh, six to zero with one abstention. Great. So with that, uh, thank you so much, John. Really appreciate, uh, the work. I really appreciate the Park Advisory Board and all the work that they did. And carrying this forward. That was a great effort, um, and the public for providing so much feedback and comments. Um. It's a truly community effort. So thank you all. Uh, with that, we will move to our. Uh, presentation by the downtown, for the Downtown Streetscapes Project Bio Swell. Chris, do you want to go ahead and introduce, um, Murray Smith and. The representatives?
I will. Give me half a second here just to make sure people that need their video started and muted can do that. I was looking for. Adam, everybody keeps moving around on my screen, sorry. All right, so. Um, we've asked, uh, City Council asked us to have the engineer put a bit of a presentation together, talk about the bio swell and South. Ninth Street, uh, Swifters tonight. I'll just do a quick introduction and then I'll, I'll turn the timer to, um, Sam DeBelle. Who's going to lead the presentation, uh, Sam DeBelle's, uh. Engineer with Murray Smith, who the city's contracted with for this project. Uh, Chris Link, uh, is showing on the screen is also with Murray Smith and overseeing this project. Uh, Savannah Crawford is our Region Two, uh, Director from ODOT. And is here with us. Uh, Bill Ness is an engineer with ODOT and has been, uh, assistant with this project. And, uh, providing, uh, the humor as needed. And also, uh, let's see, I don't see. Adam's got his video on, but, uh, Adam Roberts is here as well. He is the. Oh, I'm going to butcher your title, Adam Savannah. What's, uh, what's, uh, Adam's title?
Region Environmental Coordinator.
Great, thank you, Adam. Uh, Regional Environmental Coordinator with, uh, with ODOT as well. So got a good panel to answer questions. Um, but, uh, let's go ahead and jump right into the presentation. I know, uh, Sam's put quite a bit of time into this. Um, try to get through it and then again, got a good panel answering your questions, counsel has, uh, at the end here. Uh, Sam, I believe I've got you as co-host, so you should be able to share your screen.
Thank you, Chris.
Sam, I'll just mention, I was getting a little feedback from your microphone. But just. Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, is that any better?
I think so. We'll see.
Okay, let me know, stop me if, uh, if you can't hear me. Okay, how's that sound?
Sounding okay.
Okay. Well, uh, Chris, thank you for the intro. Um, I'll try to speak as crisply as possible for you guys, um. And, uh, excited to be here tonight. Um, as, as Chris mentioned, I'm the project manager for Murray Smith, where the civil engineers on the project. Along with Downtown Safety and Streetscapes. Uh, it's been, I think, referred to by a bunch of different names, but. I'm guessing at, at this point, I think all of you guys know what we're talking about. Uh, tonight, uh, I'd like to, to get into, uh, specifically a discussion on. Uh, what we're proposing for off-site stormwater quality treatment. And, uh, with me tonight, as, as Chris just, uh, went through an intro, you guys can get a, a second chance at titles there for. Savannah Crawford, Adam Roberts, and Bill Ness, um, with ODOT, they'll be. Available for questions and answers as, as, uh, as Chris mentioned, and, and Chris Link, who also was just introduced. Has been involved with this project for quite some time. I'd say over a decade. Uh, he'll be able to join in too, in case there's any kind of legacy questions to get into. Um, I think before we even start moving here, I think a big piece of, of this discussion tonight. Is going to center on, uh, really requirements and what we're doing, uh, as part of this project and. And why this impact is being proposed, uh, down on Ninth Street. And that is really right there in the title, the, the stormwater quality treatment aspect. Um. You'll see that as a recurring theme as, as we go through, uh, that. We are reacting to requirements that are dictating that we provide stormwater quality treatment. And no, uh, quantity control, uh, or, or other flow control. In other words, we're not proposing to add any, uh, capacity or reacting to any capacity demands. Uh, instead, we're really focusing on, on meeting requirements, uh, for stormwater quality. And cleaning the water, the, the stormwater runoff, uh, before it gets discharged to the Mary's River. So, uh, let's get into it. Uh, tonight. Agenda-wise, uh, I'll try to move fairly quickly so we can spend some good time on questions and answers, but things I want to cover are. Uh, I guess, uh, really a list of questions to get us kicked off. First, uh, why are we doing this? Uh, is it really required? And, and what is, uh, that requirement specifically? Two, and we may spend a decent amount of time here, um, where can we provide this treatment? Uh, we, we looked at, uh, just a, a, a large number of different options, which again, we'll get into. Um, and, and we'll talk about really why and where it can be feasibly provided. Uh, we'll talk specifically about what's currently proposed and what that will look like. And then finally, uh, we'll spend some time just reviewing, uh, what exactly. What is proposed is going to do to the park and to the right of way where it's proposed. Uh, what are those impacts? And what are the constraints driving the design as it's currently proposed? Um. So, uh, getting into it, uh, that first bit on the agenda there, the requirements, um, here's a, 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 just a header to. To get this, um, sort of familiar with you guys, uh, as I led with at the top there. We're talking tonight about stormwater quality and that's really because that's what the code is requiring that we address. Uh, mitigation for capacity or what we often call flow control. You, you probably heard the term detention. Detention ponds and vaults. Uh, that is not a part of the discussion tonight, and that's because the project is not proposing. Uh, impacts that will trigger those types of requirements. So, some details here, and I know there's kind of a lot of noise all of a sudden on the screen. Uh, Chris. Called this alphabet soup. I included some acronyms here, um, really with the intent being that if, um. Any of you guys wanted to spend some time going back and flipping through this more of as, more as a document than as a presentation, it would be. Available to you. So I'm not going to go through all of this, but that first bullet is really just talking about. That requirement and the Dangerous Species Act tri- triggering, um, that we, we address. Uh, really, uh, in, in, in every project, uh, we, we assess and determine whether or not. Uh, what's known as stormwater management requirements will be triggered. In this case. As I've mentioned, the requirement is for treatment and not for flow control. Um, the second bullet talks more specifically about what that water treat, water quality treatment requirement will be. And in our case, and in a lot of these ODOT projects, uh, the trigger is, is reconstructing roadway. Over which, uh, we see a, you know, a whole lot of traffic or what we call a high ADT, eight average. Daily trips, uh, the project, and you'll see a, a good overview of it here in a moment as I get into some of the later slides. Is approximately six acres of, uh, what we call contributing impervious areas. And that's really more or less just curb-to-curb areas where we see a lot of pollutants. That in MFS, the nymphs, as we call it, is the National Marine Fisheries Services. And they have, uh, a lot to do with that as well. So this last bullet is really just, um. I, I think the, the zoomed in, uh, requirements that we are looking at as we work through our design alternatives. And that's the ODOT Hydraulics Manual, which talks about all the ins and outs of what's allowed and how to apply those things, those engineering. Uh, uh, facilities to, uh, any given project. In this case, we're looking specifically at that stormwater quality treatment requirement. Moving right along then, uh, into the design process, and as I mentioned, we will spend a minute here. This is really a discussion on, uh, what else have we looked at and why did we land where we did? Um, and, and why are there no other options, um, that might be, um, you know, might represent less of an impact? Have we minimized the impact adequately? What you're looking at here on the screen is, uh, is a sort of. Familiar picture, I'm sure, but you've seen it a lot of different ways. In this case, um, we're stealing a snapshot from our. Design plans and adding a few labels to, to help define, um. Or to, to help display, I should say, the existing, uh. Stormwater runoff basins in the city of Philomath, and these are mapped in the city of Philomath Storm Drainage Master Plan. And what these are, uh, a basin or a tributary area, they're really interchangeable terms. Um, and what that is for anybody that's curious, it's effectively if, if a drop of water lands in front of you. Where does it discharge to a receiving water body? And what is the area around you from which drops of water, raindrops also discharge at that same point? So if I can use my mouse here for a second, I don't know if you guys can see that, the Ninth Street Drainage Basin, uh. Discharges to Mary's River here at the end of the Ninth Street ditch. The Thirteenth Street Drainage Basin, very creative nomenclature. Discharges down here at Thirteenth Street via a pipe conveyance system, or at least partial pipe conveyance system. So that's the first step here is to just first understand where's the stormwater runoff coming from? Where is it going? The next step is to try to. Identify and fully define all of the proposed geometry. For the project and really establish that what we're proposing is not going to. Change anything with the way that things are currently being collected and discharged to the river. And really. The reason for that is that that triggers or kicks off a whole set of requirements, including. That capacity analysis or, or flow control, as we call it. So we're working to avoid that, and we have successfully, at least with the current design. But we're also looking at the existing systems and the topography again that define these basins. And the systems that convey the water that's being discharged. And making sure we understand all of those constraints so that we have a full picture. Of what we're capable of and what kinds of facilities might be viable. So this next slide is going to be a little window into that. Analysis and I'll try not to spend too much time here. There's kind of a lot of information, but really the gist here to give you guys. Let's you in on a little secret is to just show that we have spent some time analyzing a lot of different options. For how to treat the runoff from this project. And, and why and how we've ultimately landed where we have. So. You can see up there in the right hand corner, a key map. You all recognize your downtown, your lovely downtown, getting lovelier and. We looked first at the Thirteenth Street Drainage Basin and how we would treat runoff. In that basin specifically. And with what's being proposed for some of the streetscape improvements, the way that the project is laying out. There is quite a bit of room for what, and I've just clicked there to show a, a little note. For what we're calling bio retention cells. That's an ODOT term. For what you guys might recognize as stormwater planters or a term a lot of folks recognizes rain garden, and that's a facility that. Receives stormwater runoff from a quote unquote dirty impervious area and allows water to infiltrate through a media. In this case, it'll be a water quality soil mixture. With landscaping and, and really these, these facilities tend to blend in. Really well with, with what you would normally see in a streetscape. You know, there are some sort of various depressions that. A train die might notice, but for, for the most part, these are landscaped planters, but they're designed specifically to treat. Stormwater by filtering it through the soil media and then collecting it and routing it downstream. So we've managed to, to implement several of these in the design in the Thirteenth Street Drainage Basin. You'll notice the kind of reddish area that's meant to represent. The C I A here or contributing impervious area. That we're not able to treat via these stormwater planters. And so right away, as we work through design, we identified that. We would have a fair amount of area that we couldn't feasibly treat onsite, quote unquote, within the project limits. And that we would have to find some other method to provide treatment. Typically, that would happen offsite. For this Thirteenth Street Drainage Basin, there really were not any locations downstream where stormwater runoff is already going. Again, maintaining those natural drainage patterns. And historic drainage patterns to, to provide that offsite facility. So right away, we knew. As we assess the Ninth Street Drainage Basin, that we would not only have to think about what we're doing with water being collected in the Ninth Street Drainage Basin, which is a more or less. West of Twelfth Street. But we'd also have to think about how to upsize anything to accommodate. Water or, or not to accommodate water, I should say, to compensate. For areas that are being discharged from the Thirteenth Street Drainage Basin untreated. So. The first thing we, we looked at was this B here, you'll see these letters start to pop up on your screen. Was to do, try, try to do the same thing. How can we implement these stormwater planters in ODOT right of way? Blending in with the landscaping that's proposed. And frankly, there really just was not a way to do that. With the, the, the way that the, the project lays out. There's just inadequate space to locate any more of these planters as you had 12th or west of 12th. You know, there's, there are areas where we could do it. But again, it just would not be comprehensive. And so we rejected that. The next thing we looked at, and really this is probably the most common application in my experience. For doing stormwater treatment is to. Really work on keeping that dirty water, quote unquote. Quarantined, no pun intended, or separated so that we're not having to. To provide treatment and build facilities for anything more than what's actually required. That type of approach is sometimes called a bypass facility where we. Take those low flows, those water quality storms when you've had no rain for a while and streets are really dirty and you just have a nice little. Early fall rain or, or something like that where all the trash and dirt gets picked up. And we, we allow that water or we, we implement. Facilities to take that low flow and treat just that low flow and then route it back. To the main conveyance. So in a huge storm, everything sort of just goes right down the middle. In a small storm or what we call water quality storm. We take that water and treat it in a bypass facility and routed back. Now here's where I'll introduce something that you're going to see recurring as we work through the rest of the slide. And again, I'll try to go a little faster so we can get into the, the meat of this thing and talk about Ninth Street. But that theme, you'll hear me say hydraulic constraints. That's just effectively, how can we take water, treat it, and then get it back to the existing storm system? By gravity or a term we like to say all the time is, is how can we daylight that? Back to the existing system. For this option C, this bypass option, which again is something typically tried to go after, and that's why it's listed here so high in the list. It's just not feasible because those types of facilities tend to require under drainage, which requires water to, to migrate. Sort of high to low. And by the time we get back to the main system, we're frankly too deep. Probably a phrase. Again, this wet pool and, and if you're following along here, I know there's a lot of text on the screen, but a wet pool is. Is for, for those who haven't heard that term, that's what we've just talked about here, the stormwater planter. Rain garden type of application, and, and that's just meant to, to say that water goes there and stays there. And then it infiltrates and then it, and that's how it's cleaned and then it's, it's discharged offsite. I'll, I'll help explain the distinction with what we're currently proposing in a second once we get to it. That option's rejected again for that same reason, hydraulic constraints. We are not able to daylight. Once we, we determined that hydraulically. We weren't able to. Implement either of these facilities. In the, in the natural location where all of the Ninth Street Basin currently drains down the Ninth Street ditch. We started looking at other areas south of the site from us in the river that might be a, another option for treatment. And maybe we would be able to do this wet pool approach and, and contain the facility a bit better. The first place, really the, the main place that we looked was down 11th at the rodeo grounds, thinking. You know, hey, that's a great spot to, to maybe take advantage of and, and a place that's a little bit more out of the way. Where we can accomplish some of the stormwater mitigation. And it won't be impacting really anything. Unfortunately, we had the same issue with this, the existing storm system, really in Applegate and down Ninth Street is, is just. It's just very flat and you might even notice this if you walk down Ninth Street and could look and try to find. Where that pipe storm system pops out into the ditch and, and we won't be able to find it. And that's because it's full of sediment and, and it's full of sediment. Because the velocities in the system are inadequate to keep it clear. And those velocities are inadequate because it's so flat. So we are just too flat to do things the sort of conventional way and we're too flat. To do things elsewhere. And we've. Kind of at this point in the design process, started to identify the fact that. We are going to have to do something with what we already have. In effect, we're not going to be able to. To introduce any kind of, you know, additional flow path. Because that will cause us to just lose too much elevation. We still thought it worthwhile though, after we exhausted our own brains trying to sort through this, that we would go and hit up some of our, our, the folks in the industry that. Provide these types of stormwater treatment facilities, inflow control facilities. One of those outfits is a company called Contex, and they provide all sorts of different facilities for these types of applications. Unfortunately, none of them though, with the magic to send stormwater. Uphill. And so again, we're stuck with what we have, sticking with the existing flow path. Not elongating it to, to lose any elevation and that option was rejected as well. After that, we thought, let's go back on site and maybe we can get local with some of our facilities. And that's what this is. This option G is, and, and it's not really meant to be specifically this location. It's really meant to be. Throughout the Ninth Street Drainage Basin where we're proposing to do work. And that option was rejected. I'm sorry, maybe I left out the fact that this option is what, what, what are known as filteras, and there are other folks, other outfits that. That manufacture similar types of facilities. They're very localized. Media filtration facilities that were clean stormwater runoff. So that term localized just means it's not a facility that's able to treat a large amount of water. And as a result, we would have to implement a really large number. Of these facilities, which would really become cost prohibitive. Really from the, from the outset, as we look at the budget and what we're able to do. With the project budget. And then not to mention that, that, that the long-term impact is just a. A lot of maintenance and, and the onus is on the city for that type of maintenance. And so we went away from that option as well. I'm, I'm going to bring up the last two here at the same time. It's probably pretty obvious why. Option I is what we selected and some of you have seen this in some kind of schematic form or at least how to describe to you. Option H is really the same option. And, and again, we're going to get into this here in a second. We'll look at all of this in, in greater detail. But pushed over to the west. This was something we looked at early on, despite the fact that it's down here toward the bottom of the list and felt that. Better, it's kind of matched up with what we ultimately selected, but. Early in the process, we looked at this approach. Can we use up just Ninth Street right of way? So we avoid impacting the park at all. And install the same type of facility more or less in line with the existing ditch. But, but again, a little bit further to the west and, and out of the park property. We went away from that fairly quickly, and that was because there are just a, a, a number of existing utilities in Ninth Street. There's a wellhead for the water treatment plant. There's also plans to expand the lagoons for the water treatment plant. And even with the existing footprint of the water treatment lagoons, which are a little further to the south of the building there. It squeezes that right of way to the point where we would have to find another way for access. And so. We can talk more about that here as we get into some of these later slides, but from a high level, that was a. Infeasible option. And, and that is why here we are with option I. Offsite biofiltration swell in line with the existing South Ninth Street ditch. I've pasted this back up here so everybody can keep track. We're talking stormwater quality and not stormwater quantity. We're not adding. Any discharge to the existing system. We are keeping what we have and we're. Cleaning that water before it gets discharged to the river. So finally, let's get into the design a little bit more zoomed in. You'll see this view a few more times here as we get into some of their constraints. But this is the, the park property. You can see the, the, the proposed water reservoir there to the northeast of. The proposed well, the proximity to the existing wetlands and ponds, and then, then discharging to the river. Here's a kind of. My best attempt. Perspective view and not a graphic artist, but I felt that it was kind of helpful to, to see this from another angle. This is a. Kind of a repeat of a photograph that you would have seen on the cover. Of the presentation and the first slide there. And this is, is really just to, to give you guys another view of where this thing sits. It will be that same color. I'll tell you that. So why here? Again, I know we've talked about this a little bit as we went through the other options. But more specifically, or just to reiterate, I should say. It maintains existing drainage patterns, a, a key criteria for avoiding any kinds of requirements. To modify existing conveyance systems for increased capacity. Or anything of that nature, which can really represent a pretty significant impact. If not, if not managed properly. So we're very fortunate. In this sense, at least in this room, to be not thinking about. Those changes in stormwater demand, which there are none, but instead be thinking about. How do we keep this water clean even for it gets down to the river? We've talked about this as well. It provides that compensatory treatment for the untreated Thirteenth Street Basin runoff. So if you remember on the overall, we are not able to treat all of that area with those stormwater planters. We're not treating that water directly. So that water does make it to the river. Instead, we're providing treatment for areas outside of our project limits or potentially within, inside our project limits. That can be feasibly. Assess to say that these, this stormwater runoff is sort of the same. Amount of pollutants as you would see being discharged from the, the Thirteenth Street Basin. And so. We provide that compensatory treatment. In other words, we go above and beyond what's required for our Ninth Street. Drainage basin in order to compensate for the portions that we're not able to treat. This approach is also something that you might expect. We've spent a lot of time with the E Q. Assessing how we're going to manage this and how are we going to provide this facility in a, in a way that. Minimizes impact to existing wetlands and other sensitive areas. And D E Q has, has worked with us all along the way as they do on all projects of this nature whenever something like this is required. And this is a, a, a location that they have, have identified as a preferred location. To any of the other alternatives that we've investigated. We've kind of touched on it as we talked about compensatory treatment for that area in the Thirteenth Street Basin, or I should probably stop saying that and just start saying. East of Twelfth Street. What this facility also does is naturally, since it's right in line with the existing ditch. It provides water quality treatment, not only for the runoff coming from the highway. But also for a, a fair, fairly large area of, you know, existing industrial and, and residential. North and south and in between. And, and a total of actually about sixty-two acres of city area according to the code requirements. Now finally, this is an option that. Helps to keep project costs down. And that is really a result of the fact that we can. We hope to utilize existing city owned property, both right of way and in an area of park. Here's another zoomed in look and this helps to, to again, understand the proximity to the water treatment plant. The proposed reservoir, you can see the access there sort of sketched in for the reservoir and what we're proposing. So some of this stuff is a bit redundant and I can maybe skip ahead a little bit. So I don't want to eat the whole night up. But this has been a, a design that again, we have, we've spent a lot of time looking at and coordinated with the, the water project. We've, we've aligned it in a way that we can avoid utilities in the right of way. We can avoid impacts to the lagoons. We can avoid cutting off Ninth Street access down to, to Mary's River. And, and because we did that, the process has been in motion for quite some time. And, and the permitting for, for environmental is a pretty significant effort. And Adam Roberts, as Chris mentioned, is here on the line today. And if there are questions, hopefully he can jump in. But I wanted to give you a, a quick summary of the current status for permitting. You know, this location has been agreed to and approved by DEQ. And this is, has been a quite, quite a long process to do that. As you hopefully picked up by how complex all of the analysis was there. I hope I did a decent job of breaking it down so, so we could at least understand it from a high level. But, but obviously it's not a very straightforward application and so had a lot of eyes on it. So I, I may not even get into all of the bullets here. There's a lot of numbers and letters here. But this is suffice it to say that, that these permits are in progress. Some of them have been obtained. The joint permit application, that's the JPA third bullet down is the United States Army Corps of Engineers and Department of State lands. And that is everything to do with the wetlands and mitigating for, for those wetlands that are impacted. There's also been a survey conducted by the Oregon State Museum of Anthropology. And no resources were found or potential for finding strength construction. With that said, if, you know, if something shows up during excavation, there are protocols to stop work and bring in professional archaeologists for, for evaluation. I think this is a good time to, just to, to one more time revisit that. One more time revisit that, that last option or first option, depending on who we are. To, to potentially locate this facility just slightly to the west. And what might represent, what, what might look on the surface like kind of an easy fix. I mentioned why that doesn't feel like a feasible or is not a feasible option. And may require, could require some more investigation. If we are asked to investigate that further. Any adjustment really to what's currently proposed, again, will sort of re-kick the permitting process for all of the wetland impacts and natural resources and so on. And so what I think I'm, I'm trying to say here is that any adjustment to the current design represents the same impact to the project schedule. And that is, it will be a significant delay and as a result of, of the required permits in, in the impending construction season. One more zoomed in look here and we're getting close to wrap up and we can have some questions and answers. I think that. So we've just touched on archaeological. I think that there, and what we've heard at least, is that there has been a fair amount of discussion and conversation about the impacts to the existing trees for good reason. And this, this view, I think, helps to show that there are a fair number of trees that will be impacted certainly. Those that are mapped there are just as you see them out here, the red circles. Those are existing trees to be removed within that footprint. These trees that are mapped are just those that are six inches in diameter or greater. So there's a total of, you can do the math there, sixty-five trees or, or other vegetation might be a tiny little shrub that's been documented in the environmental survey. Twenty-eight of those are larger than six inches in diameter. And of those, if you, if you notice this white line here is the right of way. Of those, I, I, there are only a few that are not at least partially in right of way. And I'd say the majority are in right of way or on that right of way line. And I think that's important to note. The other benefit here is we're not impacting existing utilities. You can see the old wellhead for the water treatment plant is here. And that's a significant facility that we're able to avoid with the alignment as it's shown. Some other data, it's about point three acres of the park that's being impacted. It's about a half an acre of the right of way that's being impacted. And lastly, we've talked a little bit about wetlands. A total of point one eight or just under point two acres of wetland being impacted. And that's really a result of being able to stay as far north as we are. As things, as, as we move further south. The wetlands expand and that impact starts to increase. The way that this is laid out currently is really the result of several iterative design changes. Working with ODOT Wetland folks and environmental folks to understand what types of impact mean what in minimizing an impact to a wetland. Common sense tells you that that is the best thing to do. And in fact, that's true. There are thresholds in those wetland impacts that if you crest certain thresholds, additional requirements, costs, timeline come into play. And so this design allows us to minimize that impact. Not only that, but the, the, the input from ODOT Environmental and it's documented in our stormwater management plan, which has been approved by DEQ, states that the functionality of the wetland in the proposed condition will be enhanced from the existing condition. Once this swale is constructed, it allows for better hydrology and improves the, the plant life. And, and I guess theoretically than the, the wildlife as well. There's that note again. So improving the plant life, here is a slide and here we're just about done. Here's a snapshot of, of one of the latest greatest landscape plans put out by DLA Doorty Landscape Associates. They, I, I think might be a name you guys recognize. They've been also working on this Blomworth couple project for quite some time. And I felt I, I ought to just include this tonight because it was a, I think, a nice picture of what this might look like from the sky. And again, you have to look past the text and the, and the graphics there. But visually, this is a landscape feature. It's providing water quality by allowing water to run down the natural path of the ditch and run through things like sluice edge and junkus and clean that water, collect some of those sediments and pollutants. It's not a facility that's cleaning water by media filtration or going from top down, which is some of those other facilities that we talked about that we really can't do due to the hydraulics of the site. And so here is Oregon Ash that all their proposed. And these photos really I included because they represent, I think, the most significant application for landscaping. Let's finish up tonight and then we can ask some questions with some examples, some photos of, of biofiltration swales around temperate North America. We'll say that these are not local, but they are in the area. And these are maybe the types of facilities you might have looked at and not thought anything of it. But this is, this is an example of, of, of what one of these might look like. In this case, I wonder if water is coming from this roadway, perhaps coming through a, an inlet and being daylighted out into the bioswale and routed down, cleaned by these reeds and grasses and other things. Same thing here. I have a few more examples of this. These are a little bit prettier landscape and, and some of the things, you know, some of the growies in here are maybe not necessarily what we're proposing. I think we're a little bit more run of the mill. But still really good examples, just showing that water is going to naturally get down here. It's, it's a wider ditch with plantings is really what this is ultimately going to look like. My last slide tonight is. Is a couple of, of real examples of ODOT facilities, biofiltration facilities with, with really a totally different application, but providing the same type of water quality treatment. So these are roadside biofiltration swales. The reason I included this slide was really just to try to help showcase how well these facilities can tend to blend in with the existing environment or with whatever is there. In this case, you may drive by and think that there's a wide ditch. In this case, I'm not sure if you really see much of anything, but both of these are projects that we've worked on and done design for. Neither of these received any kind of landscape attention. And as you saw in the slide previous, this application will be quite a bit different than that, in that sense. But I felt that these were good images just to help show that the facility, the treatment facility is not really much to look at. It's in our case, a bit wider ditch. And I guess that'll be my last statement and we can get into some Q and A.
Great. Well, thank you, Sam. Really appreciate the presentation and all the work that you put in to, to pull this together. And I'll just note that as a hydrologist, I do recognize that these rain gardens and these bioswales are really some of the highest standard of practice for hydrologic drainage and, and treatment. So a lot of us, a lot of hydrologists aspire to create these types of, types of features in order to treat water because they are the most natural, they are very natural and park-like, really. A lot of the community tend to like them. But with that, we have any questions of Sam? Counselor Nielsen.
On slide nine, be enlarged for us. You mentioned how many trees would be removed, but the chart, maybe old eyes, I don't know. The biofiltration swale scheduled chart that you had on landscape plan. It says a number of trees, but I can't read it.
Oh, sure. Let me go back there for you and share that screen.
Do you see that slide?
This one here?
You're not, your screen's not being shared.
I got it, Sam.
Thank you, Chris.
No, no, no. It's another one where the actual landscape. Excellent. So that looks like it lists a number of trees and shrubs and such. Does it, is that correct?
It sure does. And, and I'm not sure how well you're going to be able to read it even here on the screen. But I'm, you know, we're happy to provide that to you separately as a, as a PDF or reading the PDF.
Yeah, considering how many trees are being removed, it would be nice to know how many, the number of plantings to be included. Including trees and shrubs and such.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And to your, and specifically Counselor Nielsen, you're asking about the number of trees and plants that will be planted in a, in the new facility.
Isn't that correct? Is my understanding that that plan is projected?
That is correct, yes.
And that's what I would like to know, yes.
Thank you. Counselor on driving.
Thank you for that presentation. It was a lot, a lot more helpful than just trying to read the papers on my own. So I have a couple of questions. One has to do with construction and whether that will all be from Ninth Street or if you would, would be entering from the other side of the park? The way that it will, that it's supposed to happen for the reservoir? And then the other question has to do with ecosystem impacts. How, what are the ecosystem impacts that are going to be happening? You know, taking an already, I'm assuming mature ecosystem, wetland and making it into a, oh, albeit larger wetland, but it'll also be a younger, less mature kind of. Well, how, well, how will that affect any water and insect life and birds?
Yeah, no, both great questions and I may phone a friend here. I, I think for the first one, I can, I can kind of start to answer. You know, we, we don't know yet who will be building this project. But we can expect that just based on experience and, and working through projects like this, that, that a contractor would be interested in keeping equipment out of the park and, and on, on, on Ninth Street. It's a, it's a better access. I see Chris joined in. Maybe Chris can amend that. And, and when we get to the next question, I'm going to ask Adam Roberts to join in as well. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so for, for the construction access, it has to be from Ninth Street, since that's public right of way. And you know, that even though the, the city owns the park, the contractor has to stay on roadway right of way or that temporary easement that's being purchased for access. So they cannot come around from the backside, even though it's, it's owned by the city. They do have to, since it's an ODOT project and an ODOT contractor, they have to access from Ninth Street. And I'll defer to Adam on the, on the environmental questions.
Yeah, so I totally understand your second question. And yes, we are going to be impacting a more mature ecological setting when we build this. But part of our permitting through the Army Corps and DSL, we have to do what's called a functional assessment. And that's determining what's there and then what goes back and do a comparison of the two. And certainly there will be a temporal loss. So there'll be a short timeframe where, you know, you've got more younger plants in there. But as is the case with most wetland communities, they tend to rebound pretty quickly. There'll be, I believe that we have some willows being planted there. Those grow quickly. Those provide those habitats. We're going to have a larger wetland area onsite as a result of having the swale there. So you're going to have more invertebrates, more bugs, stuff like that. That's growing and providing to the ecosystem within that new swale area. And then over time, all of the plantings that we're putting back in will mature back into place.
And we have a question by Counselor Cosi.
Thank you. Yes, I wonder if you could tell me how you determine which trees have to be removed?
Certainly. So it's really not a selection process that has anything to do with necessarily what we're proposing and how we're going to be treating water. It really has everything to do with the impact that's brought on by the excavation required to widen the ditch to the, to the extent that's required by all of our design analysis to provide, you know, the requisite treatment for all of the water that we're, we're having, we're seeing come through the Ninth Street ditch. So you can imagine if you've got a ditch like this and you've got to widen it. This is that cut slope that used to be here and now it's here. And so anything in that kind of in-between area is, is a tree that would be impacted. And the way we really assess impacts to trees most often is we don't just look at whether or not our construction, and especially if we're going to be excavating existing earth. Does it get close to the tree? That is something that we really pay close attention to. And it's not just right up to the trunk. It's often to the drip line of the tree and whether or not a tree might stay viable after constructions complete. Does that make sense?
Yes. Do you, are some of the trees you're removing on species? And for any of the trees you, you remove, do you ever try to move them rather than just cut them down?
That is a, a good question. I, I didn't catch that first part. Did you ask if there was any native or a non-native being removed? Okay.
Either way.
I guess it's the same question either way. That one, I don't know if I can readily answer. That might be something I, if possible, can follow up with. It or just by going back and looking into some of the environmental permitting documentation. So that might be a little legwork for me.
I can jump in if you'd like.
Please, Adam. Thank you. Good timing.
There's a fair amount of what we are removing are native. There are some non-natives in there, blackberries, things like that. But I would say a fair amount are native.
Thank you.
Maybe you could help with the question, but also the follow-up question there of. Of relocating existing trees. Is that the question, Ruth?
Yes, correct.
I can't say that an ODOT job that I've worked on before has relocated existing trees. Generally, you know, as is the case in this project, we have a confined working space. In order to find places to move those to, we would then have to go through the right away process. Find a place to put them, things like that. Some of the some of the larger trees, I don't, I don't know how many. I think there's a few. Fairly large trees that are just infeasible for moving, but. Some of those smaller trees that are in there, ash, alder. Willows, things like that. Again, species that. Once you replant with the same species, they bounce back really quick. They're, you know, as you know, it's Oregon. It's pretty green and those things grow like weeds around here. So.
Thank you. And Council Lemon?
Yeah, I haven't seen any reference to whether or not the. Outfall from Ninth Street is currently meeting the DEQ standards or not. Did you address that at all in in coming up with the report here? Or do we evaluate that at all?
I will defer to Adam once again.
Well, I I can jump in real quick. I think a little bit. This is Chris. You know. That it's it's receiving some. Treatment. But DEQ does require it's, you know, in one of Sam's first slides where he's going through the alphabet soup. In order to be considered treatment, it does need to have. You know, a a water qual. There there's a couple of standards, you know, it has to have a certain depth and velocity in order to. Be considered, you know, to the level of treatment needed. And then it also needs to be. Like a water quality mixed soil. That's going to provide some infiltration. I know this is what Sam considered a. Or mentioned was a flow-through facility, but it does need to have that. Water quality mix. So the short answer is no, I don't think we, you know, in some cases, we have been able to argue that. You know, facilities are already providing that the necessary treatment. But this is really isn't one of them. It was just a it's a V ditch. That has a rat, you know, relatively deep flow. And so we need to, the reason why this is so wide is we need to. Make that flow as shallow as possible. To provide the level of treatment to meet the standards. Adam, you can add anything you want to that as well.
Yeah, you you nailed most of it there. The current configuration, the ditch, a lot of that water just passes right through to the Marys. As Sam pointed out, over sixty acres of. Urban runoff with all of the pollutants that come along with it. It's getting a minor amount of treatment from the existing vegetation that's there, but. You think about it in a heavy runoff event, a lot of that water is just flowing right through, not really, doesn't really stay in the ditch very long and then discharges to the river. Versus the facility when it's done. As Sam said, the water gets spread out. It's flowing through a water quality soil mix, which helps remove dissolved metals and other pollutants. And then the vegetation that's growing in there also helps. It slows the water down. It's got. A longer residence time for a better quality of treatment.
Great, thank you. Council Lo.
Yes, three-part question. First part is. When is would the construction take place? How long might it last? And would it? Would there be a need to restrict access down the rest of? The road to the river or? Say to the existing water plant or to Flo's Community Services, which is also there. Same area.
So construction currently is scheduled to, and thank you for the question. Currently scheduled to commence this summer, this construction season, we sometimes call it. The project is currently scheduled to go out to bid. May and we expect to be in the ground. Around July, say. The full duration of the project. Is currently projecting out. Into twenty twenty-four, middle of twenty twenty-four. So it's a two-year project. Of that, it'll be a very limited amount of time relatively when this whale construction work is is going in. And that's due to a number of things. One is there are certain requirements. For when we can work in the ditch, ecological, environmental requirements and in-water work window, we call it. Two is that the the work itself isn't. Does not represent a hugely significant duration. There not a lot of utility installation. It's primarily an excavation. Project where landscaping and erosion control measures will be, I think, a significant. Part of that that work. And then thirdly, I think, again, kind of back to just Counselor Andrade's question. About where and how the 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 swell will be accessed during construction. Until we have a contractor on board, it's hard to say what exactly those impacts to Ninth Street. Will be, but I do know that there'll be a. An impetus to maintain access, certainly during that during that construction.
Thank you. Council Bisco.
Thank you. I really appreciate the depth of that donation. I think it's safe to say that. I'm not sure the council has been aware of the size of this project or the scope of this project. So you've you brought. Some good information before the council. I I want to. I have a couple of questions, I guess. One of them is that. What we just recently had some high, high waters. We didn't meet actually the flood stage. So it was a couple of feet or close to three feet below flood stage. And that where that water and that Ninth Street ditch is right now was actually up and over the banks and onto the street itself. As well as into where the water reservoir was. And I know there's some concerns about more frequent flooding events happening in this space. So I'm wondering how that might impact this project, both from the standpoint of pollutants that are now being directed this way. But also just the ability to actually do the work itself. So disturbing that much soil, taking out that many trees. Can you speak to that? A second question is, there's a great deal of concern about removing that many trees from a park that has a decades-old agreement. Between the city and the original landowners to protect the park. That's a pretty substantial impact to the park itself. And there's a fair community. Group of community members that are concerned about that impact as well. My concern is that you're taking very established oak trees. And you're replacing them with ash trees and willow trees, which by comparison are. Maybe good for bioswales, but a very different tree and the, you know, just a miniature longevity and quality. And then my third question is, is I understand that this is the preferred site. But the second in line or second place site actually would not require this much tree removal. It would not impact actual park. City property. So the the park agreement that preserved the park. And might it allow for? The park itself to be maintained. So we're looking at a conservation easement to the west of this. So this bioswale is really, this whole project is taking. Place in potentially the middle of the new and the old sections of the park.
Thank you, Council Bisco, and I'll do my best to see if I can recall all of that. You might have to help me along the way.
Right.
The first one regarding floodwaters and potential for additional impact brought on. By the by the installation of this facility. Really goes back to the kind of overarching theme there, which was. We're not treating any water that's not already coming to the ditch. So. That I think is a very critical aspect of this assessment is that. We haven't reconfigured the upstream tributary drainage areas. In any way, shape or form, such that. More water is coming or or dirtier water is coming. The same amount of water with the same number of cars and trucks driving over that. Impervious surface is coming to the ditch. But back to Council Lehman's comment, really, the existing ditch does not adequately. Treat that water as it currently is 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 now as you walk out there today. And that is really why we have designed and tend to implement this. Bioswale, which is just creating a wider, shallower flow. One thing that that does on the surface, and that's not a pun intended. Is it actually removes a a fair amount of material. That's currently in the floodplain, effectively. Increasing the available volume for floodwaters. And so in that sense, you might argue that it's improving that condition, although it may be very infinitesimal. The location of the swell also as it relates to floodplain and floodway is. Really kind of as far north as we can keep it. And I think that is. On on purpose, really to stay out of the floodway where you might see higher velocity floodwaters. The floodplain where water does tend to back up. We are in that floodplain. But again, the proposed work is is actually removing material and really creating additional volumes for floodwaters. And there is no added demand to the ditch. So the second question. And I don't know if you had another call up there, but the second question. Related to the trees. I I think sounds like it. It plays into this revisiting the idea of pushing. The facility further to the west. Is that is that accurate? And avoiding this impact to the existing trees.
So I I'm not sure that the council's been aware of what the options other than this ditch would be and outside of actually the designated Mary's River Park specifically. I think that when you look at an impact of ninety-four to ninety-seven trees, depending on which documents I'm reading. That's pretty substantial. So given that we have possible opportunities to move it outside of our boundaries. Might be appealing if that's a viable option. I'll, you know, maybe not preferred, maybe not the number one choice, but is that an option?
So revisiting that, and it's a great question and definitely something worth looking at. Again, we, I think, started the analysis and the assessment for this design. By looking at that specifically, how can we stay in right of way with this with this facility? And not impact any existing trees or or park property. And we identified right away that there from a high level again. Would be significant impacts to the existing utilities. In Ninth Street. And so that in itself is not prohibitive and does not make a proposed facility infeasible. But it is and does represent an impact and an added cost to the city. That was significant enough for us to 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 want to start to look elsewhere. Not only that, but it also. Is is. Going to encroach onto the city treatment, water treatment plan. Property and could be in. We would have to really look more closely, frankly, at the interaction between. A proposed swell further to the west and those existing and potentially modified water treatment plant lagoons. And make sure that we're not mixing those, obviously, and we're not impacting existing. Facilities liners and other things. And so. The kind of concerns there were significant enough for us to to know that we wanted to go away from that. Early on at a high level. The idea that we could go and look and investigate it and and could there possibly be a way to still do that? I. I think that that could still be a question. To do that would would definitely impact the project and. In a pretty significant way, schedule, cost, et cetera.
Great. Thank you so much, Sam. And I was to make a note of the time. It's eight forty-five and we still have a lot of the agenda to get through, but I did want to ask just. Sam, as a bridge to what you just stated. If we were to propose any sort of modification, no matter how minor. What's the expected? Change on the timeline for the project and budgetary costs?
Well, from a cost perspective, I don't think it could be fully defined. And I don't know that would be right off the top of my head. From the schedule perspective, this is another chance for me to. Leverage some of my backup here and either Adam Roberts or Savannah Crawford. Oh, good. Savannah's just jumped on. Go ahead, Savannah.
I'm I'm ready. So hi, Council. I'm Savannah Crawford again. I'm the area manager for ODOT. So yeah, the schedule delay is going to be fairly significant if we go and reexamine some of the options. So going back to one of Sam's earlier slides, we did do an exhaustive. Look at a variety of different options. One of the biggest options is right of way when it comes to some of these treatment options. So we are currently bidding this as late as possible in order to salvage this construction season. So bidding in May. Will allow a contractor to start this this summer. If we do not bid this May. Then we will likely need to wait until next season to bid it. Meaning that we just need the extra year to work through the right-of-way issues in the new redesign work. I don't have a cost. That's something that Chris Workman and ODOT would have to work on to determine what kind of financial impact that would be to the city. So at least a year delay. That's where we're at.
Thank you. Council Cosi.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation based on all of the information you presented. I'm comfortable with the approach you're taking. I would like to ask if you are the. Construction company that does this, if you would be willing to work with our public to relocate the trees that are six inches in diameter and less. Either within the park. Or perhaps for community members who would be interested in adopting a tree. We do have a tree board and we have an arborist on staff.
Thank you. That's a excellent idea. I may have Chris chime in here a little more experience with with working on on ODOT projects. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so. I think that. Possibility, I think we'd have to work with ODOT to see. You know, the mechanics of how that works with their contracts and our contractor. As you can imagine, you know, ODOT has fairly rigid. Requirements and construction specifications for doing things. So. I think we were have to work with Adam and then. On the environmental side to identify what those trees would be and then. The ODOT team Savannah and Bill to sort out, you know, the contract requirements to see. You know, just what is possible. With that. Part of it is right of way, you know, we can't, as as Adam alluded to the. Even though the city owns the or the the park is there, the public facility, the ODOT contractor can't just get on it without. ODOT having purchased an easement. But not to say that there couldn't be ways to work around it, provide it to the city. The city takes takes the trees and then divvy the knot. There there's options. I think we just have to work on them again. There's not a, there's not a, you know, a box we just check that says save the save these trees and and give them to someone else. So. It's something we can look into for sure.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. And Council Bisco.
I appreciate Council Cosi that idea. I will just shed a little light on that in working in contracting with landscaping. There's a certain size of trees that really becomes very not only cost prohibitive, but. Limited equipment accessibility. It requires a pretty substantial. And special special type of equipment. But the other factor here is that while. But the other factor here is that, well, too, there's a density there that would be very difficult from doing any transplanting of trees of this size. But also oak trees are not particularly favorable of that type of movement either. They're a little bit more sensitive than trees like willows or maybe ash trees. So if that was a possibility, it would be a very limited and narrow, narrow one, at least in my experience with that type of contracting. I will just say from the standpoint that I'm not sure that when we look at this, that taking, understanding always that there are time limits, but taking an approach of conservation, when we look at trees, we are a tree city. We're talking close to 100 trees here. My preference would be that we would actually consider the value and good faith agreement of the park itself and preserving the park, but also those trees. That's a substantial amount of trees in a significant, so 200 feet by 40 feet, give or take. I am curious and do have a question for Mr. DeBelle. So this project has been underway for some time. Can you tell me how far back you've been working on this bio swell project?
In other words, when did we get going with a design analysis to understand what we would be required to do, first of all? And then, and then how we might accomplish that? It's been about a year, a little over a year, I think. It was, it was the, where are we now? I guess it was the fall of 2020 when things kind of got started.
And, and it goes back further than that, too. When we first started talking about what the treatment would be, it's probably almost two years now when we were kind of scoping this with ODOT and thinking about what options, very high-level options would be for treating, knowing that that would be one of the crux, the crux of the project or one of them. Figuring out how to find treatment to treat all this runoff. Treating urban areas, urban runoff is very challenging due to space. And so having this one spot where all the, much of the, the water naturally already comes to, you know, we saw that immediately as a, an option, a good option. And that was, that was two years ago. And then we got into more of the detailed design about a year ago and started the coordination with DEQ.
Great, thank you. And, and actually, one really quick question. If we pause on this part of the project, does it pause the entire Streetscape project?
Yeah, because we can't go to bid without all the environmental permits in hand. I guess Savannah or Adam, correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, this is key to, to all of that.
You're correct, yeah.
Yeah.
This would change all of our permitting and our ESA consultation. Sorry, I know acronyms, we, we live in acronyms. Endangered species at consultation, so.
Okay, thank you. And Chris, you wanted to close us out on this topic?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I go back to the staff report or the memo on this and, and no actions required of the council, so we made a motion to proceed or anything like that. We, again, we, concerns were raised and, and I think appropriately so with some of the, you know, comments that would have been made and concerns that the community members had made. So we wanted to give this presentation, but really, you know, this is a, an engineering problem that our engineering team and ODOT have worked together to find a good solution for. But we, we don't necessarily need any action from the city council tonight, unless there's a desire to change direction on where we're headed. So with that, I don't have anything else to add. Appreciate Sam and, and Savannah and the team being here tonight to, to present. Appreciate the council's questions, but I don't have anything else to add.
Great, thank you. Really appreciate everybody, all your time. And with that, we can enter into council deliberations if there are any. Thank you.
Mayor Jones, can I recommend maybe just a quick five-minute break? Just take a pause before we move on to the agenda?
Absolutely. We'll go ahead and just take a five-minute break, we'll come back at nine o'clock.